Counsel, do I have a motion?
Move a command of executive session.
I have a motion, second command of executive session. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. You guys have it. Command of executive session. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I move that we adjourn the meeting. Second.
I have a motion, second, to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. You guys have it. We are adjourned. Counsel. It is Tuesday, March 17th, 6:01 PM. I'll open this city council meeting with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perot.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burton.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Item number two is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Thank you, Dean. I, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
I have a motion, second, to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. You guys have it. The agenda is adopted. Item four, future meeting topics, public forum. I understand we have no one who has signed up.
Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Then we will move into item five A, department presentations. And this will be the presentation discussion of the draft first amendment to the Meridian Revitalization Plan. Mr. Ariel, will that be you?
It would be me. Mr. Mayor, we are going to be calling in two consultants who helped put together the amendment and the draft plan. And so we'll just pause to get them online.
Welcome to my teleconferencing. Please enter a participant code. You are the only person on this conference. Please stay on the line.
They may be joining. We may not need them as well, but we wanted to make sure that that resource was available for you all if you had questions. Mr. Mayor, I am swapping out with Caleb, so I did hear your previous discussion about the budget amendment and the transportation letter and priority, so appreciate the support there. But just trying to be sensitive to the situation. But I wanted to discuss with you briefly the proposed deannexation, as well as the new plan for this evening. Sounds like we do have consultants on with us now. So really, this is the next step in the plan. We do have, it does need to be kind of a two-step process, where we will have the deannexation first. So we'll look to take the proposed parcels out of the existing plan and then from there create a new plan for those parcels. I did attach a memorandum for each of you, kind of outlining the rationale behind this, as well as kind of our summary of the documents. I will just highlight just a couple things. First of all, the deannexation, it really is all intensive purposes. As far as monetarily, it's a de minimis amount to the existing district, as well as MDC in general. So after talking with MDC, we're talking about $12,000 or so of increment that would be then replaced. If everything goes well, you have the, you know, the full redevelopment of the parcels, or at least of what we know of, the Galena parcels, of over $125 million of investment into our downtown that would generate approximately $616,286,000. So again, from just a numbers perspective, this is a phenomenal opportunity for us. The thing I would highlight for you all is this does enable us to tackle some things that would otherwise be very difficult to do from a private development perspective. And I think that that's what the proposed plan really gets at. We're trying to tackle a number of things that just simply wouldn't occur otherwise. Things like public parking, things like potential movement of irrigation laterals, potential improvement of right-of-way and things like that. So don't want to belabor this too much, but again, we're removing properties that are in the existing plan and then creating a new plan specific to those properties. The purpose of this, for each of you, is to consider the information, to provide any feedback that you may have to us that we can then pass on, so that we can make sure that that gets into the final document that is then publicly heard and addressed and then ultimately, if you so choose, adopted into a new district. So with that, it sounds like we do have our consultants on the line. I'm certainly open to any discussion or question. I'm just going to leave up here the actual area so we can have at least a visual. I also have the plan that was in your packet. So if you want to talk to anything specific, we can quickly go to that and talk through any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you, Cameron. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
I was hoping that you could touch on, just touch a little bit on what the key risks might be. Are there any, you know, what are the key risks that could happen associated with an urban renewal district like this deannexation and then reestablishment of one? And then why do you think those risks, how do you think those risks are being mitigated?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Strater. So I think, you know, certainly that is a question that we need to consider. There's, as far as a monetary risk, I think I mentioned that in the memo. It really is a de minimis amount to MDC and their obligations and their ongoing operation. I think where that truly is mitigated is the overwhelming abundance of additional revenue that would be generated. So yeah, there would be a potential loss. Let's say we just, you know, we deannexed, nothing occurred, the project didn't go forward, something didn't happen, yeah, we would lose approximately $12,000 in increment. That being said, you know, after discussions with MDC, you know, they're comfortable with that risk and look forward to the potential, you know, additional revenue that would be generated.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up?
Councilman Strater.
Thank you, that's helpful. I think, just to dig in a little bit deeper, and I want to try to, I'm thinking out loud here, so I apologize. Is it that, you know, provided Galena is making the investment in the civic block, the assumptions behind the tax increment revenue that will eventually come from this, essentially cover the foregone property tax? I mean, can you kind of walk through the mechanics of how that works and how any kind of gap between the private investment and what we think we need to recoup is mitigated? Because we feel like, for example, you know, they've signed a contract, they're moving forward, they've lined up their construction funding. I mean, just like, kind of give me a feel for where they're at and why we feel like that is kind of locked in.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Strater, so again, great question. So there, you know, as far as the Galena project, I think you guys are generally aware of where that's at. There was the hearing before P&amp;Z that was unanimously accepted for their height. That is the primary driver of this additional value and therefore additional tax increment revenue. So we have good, have had and continue to have good conversation with Galena and their representatives. I believe one of them, Mike Chittister, is observing and can be, could be available if you'd like to question him on, you know, where they're at and their commitment to the project. Like I mentioned at the tail end of the memo here, you know, we foresee going full steam ahead with not only the community center and community block, civic block projects, but every indication we get from Galena is that they are moving forward as well. I do think, I'll point this out as well, just in the memo. I think this is certainly a consideration is, you know, the investment would generate over $16 million. And again, this may be a question for Mr. Kuschlin, who's on the line with us, but that was a conservative number that that investment would generate. We're anticipating using about 15 of that. And then when you consider the city's participation of approximately 3 million for the community center, that would reduce that number to about 12. So we feel like, you know, give or take, we're in a good conservative spot considering that this moves forward. Like I said, if nothing does go forward, then we are, we're going to be deannexing 15 properties that generate about $12,000 of increment.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
And I apologize, I'll stop hogging the mic, but anyway, so it sounds like limited downside risk in the event that it doesn't move forward. It doesn't sound like we're taking a lot of, I guess what I'm trying to get a feel for is if the city is taking on any kind of market risk in terms of the success of commercial businesses in this area in the future, you know, somehow driving whether this is successful or not. I feel good about the Galena project and as long as they're moving forward. It seems like the upside in terms of the investment that we're making in this area would really revitalize it. But I just, I wanted to get a feel for, you know, is there any kind of risk that I'm missing here or some kind of downside scenario, particularly if we're heading into a bad economy?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Strater, so yes, definitely to market risk. It's particularly hard to address kind of the unforeseen. I mean, again, so worst-case scenario, nothing occurs, Galena walks away and we continue to have, you know, the blighted area. And then we would potentially do something else with the civic block. You know, is there, what is that risk? I think that that could be a true risk, you know, but that's up to Galena to take, not necessarily us. I think if we were to see that occur, we would arguably be in the same scenario we are now. So downside risk of that market occurring, I, again, kind of talking off the cuff, I don't, I'm not sure I see much there.
Councilmember, I mean, one of the advantages by doing it the way it's proposed is that you're resetting the clock, so you will have a full 20-year period for development. So even assuming you go through some economic cycles, certainly the intent is that within the 20-year period, you're going to redevelop property that, for now, has sat pretty much fallow for most of the period of the 2002 plan.
For the record, was that Mr. Kuschlin or?
That was Ryan Armbruster, I'm sorry. We're trying new technology and that's great, but always kind of forget the formalities when you're linked up by a mobile device. But yes, Ryan Armbruster, representing the developer.
Okay, thank you very much. And for the record, I just want to show that Councilman Hogan has joined us at 6:15. Are there further questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I guess that leads us into item five B.
Well, thanks very much. Appreciate the opportunity. Have a good evening. Bye.
Cameron, you're.
Yep, that's me as well. So again, this is just the follow-up to that, which is now the plan itself. So again, the deannexation, the amendment to the existing plan, now the plan itself that would be proposed for the deannex properties going forward. So again, here, just to hear any comments that you have to the proposed plan.
Counsel, any questions or comments regarding item five B?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Just a brief comment, and it speaks, I think, a little bit to Councilmember Strater's question about risk. And I think the part where I have been struggling on this project, I love the concept of the civic block. And when you look at the potential for downtown, it's very intriguing. My concern is, is that I think in part because of good leadership at the MDC, we have been able to be off the legislature's radar in terms of concerns and criticisms about urban renewal for nearly 20 years. I worry a project like this that benefits one single entity would very quickly land on our friends in the legislature's radar. And as we've seen this session, their desire to be more and more invested and involved in local government seems to be growing, not decreasing. So and Cameron and I had a chance to talk today, and he's aware of my concerns. I just, I recognize the opportunity. And as somebody who loves downtown, want it to be successful, I just worry about the potential risk we face, both urban renewal in general, how it impacts Meridian if we move forth with a project with a single entity that benefits. Just like, it's important for counsel to be aware of that, at least my perspective as we continue to move forward. I'm open to continuing the conversations. That's why I was supportive of the action items last week. But I think it's something that we need to be paying very special attention to as we move forth in this process.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this is Ryan Armbruster again. So actually, this project, which is pretty focused and under one ownership, is really the kind of project that the 2016 legislature, when they made all those changes, really anticipated. So it's a very focused, very finite project. So it would seem to at least meet most of the objectives that the legislature has indicated concerning project scope and project breadth.
Thank you, Ryan. And I think everyone looks, will look at these through their own eyes. I view this much like the 10-mile project, which was very similar, done in conjunction with one group for one purpose. The property was bigger, but it's simply the same type of situation for the most, you know, there may be a few changes, but I don't want to dismiss what Councilman Cavanagh says. It is a, you know, every urban role is, every urban role project, in my opinion, has the potential to have the legislature re-question their use of urban renewal by anybody.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I think if my memory serves, I don't think I was very supportive of that project at the time either. Huge regrets, absolutely was wrong about that, but I voiced concerns about the, I think at the time, a limited ownership group, there were multiple members. This one, for me, takes it just even yet another step further because there's only one single entity that would benefit. So I think that the conversation is good. I appreciate the dialogue between you, Mr. Mayor, councilmember, staff. I think everybody is going in the same place. We want to do something that's great for our downtown and great for our community. I'm just a little apprehensive about the steps that we're going to take to get there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Mr. Mayor, I had similar reservations of Councilman Cavanagh on this, looking at it going, boy, this is a very focused, very individual. And so I carefully went through the project and the rules and what the legislature puts in place for urban renewal district creation. And in going through that and the report that was developed, I find that we meet the rules and the, what they determine is the correct use of the funds that we gather for redevelopment, for everything that these districts are created for. I felt like, okay, we're meeting that. And if they want to go ahead and later say, oh, because of this, we're going to change the rules again, so be it. But for what's written and what's there, to me, it met the criteria for urban renewal. So I, you know, again, I think Councilman Cavanagh is correct in saying that, well, this is going to put a target on us. Yeah, it might, but we're playing by the rules that they set. So I think that's fine. We can, I'm comfortable moving forward then.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman. He's first. Councilman Strater.
Just a quick comment, you know, I think we run that risk all the time of the legislature, you know, changing their whims and changing the rules that we're playing by, clearly. But we have a limited opportunity set, I think, to use this tool. And it seems like this is, from a timing perspective and a catalytic project, this is that kind of meets what we need to try to transform downtown. And it feels to me like the downside risk is fairly boxed in and that has gotten me more comfortable, so I'm supportive of it.
Councilman Burton.
So I had the same reservations and questions as did many others who are on the MDC commission. For the record, I am a commissioner on the MDC commission. And I did, and we all know that there's always a moving ball at the state legislature, especially as it relates to urban renewal. And so tough to have a crystal ball as to what they're going to, how they're going to approach. As they have some strong, there are some legislators who definitely have some strong opinions in regard to urban renewal, and I respect that. We did ask Mr. Turlington, who's the contracted lobbyist for MDC at the State House in regard to this concern, and he mentioned that he didn't have great concern because of what was discussed earlier, in regard to the rules and what we're doing and dotting our i's and crossing our t's. And so MDC has historically been a model urban renewal district, like Mr. Cavanagh mentioned earlier, so just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments from counsel? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of counsel, appreciate your dialogue.
Okay. Item five C, fire department staff report discussion. Turn this over to Chief Neymeyer.
Mayor, members of council, good evening.
Good evening.
Good day, whoa, there we go. Good evening, everyone. Just checking to see if you're awake. Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you. Originally, Joe was going to be working from home tonight. We had a little switch today, so we just stuck with the plan and I'm presenting. This is, however, Joe's presentation. I want to take the opportunity, in the interest of time, to briefly walk through our staff report and to answer any questions. I know there's been a few questions over the last few weeks. Wanted to make sure we were able to walk through that, get any questions answered as we move forward, certainly with development in our community. The first thing that we look at with regards to a staff report is our travel time. I want to briefly touch on the entire response time because that's a piece of the puzzle that we don't articulate throughout. So somebody calls 911, their house is on fire. That's about a minute-long process for the call taker to take all that information, get it into the system, get it into the queue, push the button, get those tones going to our station. So we're one minute in there. We have a 90-second mandated turnout timer, that's our goal, I apologize. Our goal is 90 seconds. Turnout time means from the time the bells go off in the station till the time the wheels roll out of the station. That's day or night. We're at about 80 seconds average right now, so we're under our goal. That is a standard goal. I know there's some questions about what are others doing, what's best practice with that? That is best practice. So we're about two and a half minutes there already. And then we add our five-minute travel time, which is our wheels-rolling goal. So from the time we leave the station to the time we get on scene, our goal is five minutes. We're just under that goal currently in the department, and we've been able to maintain just under that. So that's the reasoning behind the five minutes. I know I've been here before, so I don't want to be repetitive. But the reason that's important, in a structured fire, we have about four to four and a half minutes to get there, ideally, in ideal circumstances, to get that fire contained to where it started. The room of origin is what we call it. After that, for every minute that fire burns, it's doubling in size. We want to get there early to stop the fire. On the medical side, in cardiac arrest, we have about six minutes to get there before brain death. We need CPR going, we need medications pushed, defibrillation. That's where those standards come from. So there is some science behind it where they determine this is the standard that you want to shoot for. The national standard, just so you know, is four minutes. We locally looked at that, and quite honestly, a four-minute travel time, we'd have about four more stations when we ran our analysis. I think Councilman Cavanagh asked the question, what is Boise's standard? They are four minutes for a planning purpose goal, as well as NAMP. I reached out to Chief Carper, and that's what NAMP uses for a planning tool, a planning goal.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Is that, then, there, from a planning perspective, is much different than the actuals?
Yep.
So check me up, what's the actuals?
Boise's actual is five minutes and 30 seconds. They also use a percentile or a fractile. We use an average. There's two different ways you can run your numbers. We chose to use average years ago. They use a fractile. So what that means is 90% of the time in the Boise Fire Department, they're arriving in five minutes, 30 seconds. With that, page two, and I apologize, it's not in color, but I was trying to save some ink. That is the map that you've seen before. That's the planning map that we have been using. This is the map that Joe is now using. This was developed by our GIS team, Doug Green, up in IT. So we're all consistently using the same map. The challenge is, you look at this when you're trying to determine from point A to point B, how long would it take us to get there? You can use Google, you can use MapQuest, you can use, there's, I don't know what others are out there. But every time, you might get a different answer from each one of those because of traffic, road conditions, et cetera. We're using a static map that Doug developed. We can look at this map as compared to where the parcel is and know if it's within or without outside our five-minute travel time. So we're using a consistent map here that IT has helped build for us as part of that planning effort. The next thing we look at is station reliability. That is simply put, how often is that apparatus from that station able to handle calls within that geographical boundary? We like to be 85% or higher as far as reliability. All that means is, when we're below 85%, we start talking about, okay, let's start watching this station. Is the call volume going up? Is road construction causing that? It's kind of a check balance. When we get down to 75%, we start planning to talk about, what do we need to implement within that station to augment the response? That could be something as simple as, let's look at our EMS responses. For those of you that are on council, we did that two, three years ago, where we said, let's quit going to all these EMS calls. And we did that as a system. We actually saw our reliability improve because we weren't responding to as many calls in the jurisdiction in that district. With our growth, we're starting to see that call volume within each district rise. Our busiest station right now is Station One, and we're just over 3,000 calls. When I got here as the chief 10 years ago, I believe we were at about 1,200 calls at that station. So you can see the increase in the call volume. So that's station reliability, that's another factor we look at. On that next page, you can see how we capture that reporting that comes through a database system called FireView that calculates that station reliability, and it's taking those factors into play. Call was here, which unit went? Was it the unit that's assigned to that station? And that's how we correlate those two things together. The next one is just a simple look at what's the risk of whatever development's going in. And the higher the risk, the more hazards there are. So residential, just a residential development is our lowest risk as we look at our risk factors. When you have residential with hazards, for example, not necessarily in Meridian, in some subdivisions in areas around us, they have deep ponds. That would be that additional risk factor besides just the residential homes going in. Commercial is right in the middle, commercial with hazards, and then industrial is our highest risk. We don't have a lot of industrial development, but when you do, you bring in, incorporate hazmat, technical rescue, et cetera. So that's on the risk factors. Accessibility, Joe looks at access and road widths to make sure they're in compliance, that we can get our apparatus into that development and make the turns that we need to make. Specialty resource needs, anything higher than three stories, we at least trigger that, requiring a ladder truck to get beyond that third story. Our ground ladders can only extend to three stories. So if we're anything above that, that aerial ladder device gets us. So if we're anything above that, that aerial ladder device gets us to the roof, gets us to windows, gets us access to where we need to go. We also look at any potential water rescue, hazmat or technical rescue. For example, any development down on the south channel of the Boise River, we would be looking at water, if we developed right along the river there. And then there's additional comments, any additional comments Joe has. So I would certainly stand for any questions, hope to clarify anything, or just provide this update.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Chief, on the risk identification point scale, I'm reading this, am I reading this correctly, that, for example, residential development with hazards is categorically always less risky than a commercial development?
Yes.
No matter what?
Yep. And that's a standard, you know, there's all kinds of variables you could throw in there. I think, and Joe can certainly speak to it, I would guess that if we had a residential with hazards, for example, ponds, there may be a comment to mitigate the hazard, put fencing around the pond or limit access to the pond. That would be an example of a comment. So you might have comments, I'll let Joe chime in.
Typically, sorry, mayor and council, typically, if we have something like that, it's going to be an open waterway of some sort. The, sometimes I'll throw a hazmat thing, and you're like, this is a residential neighborhood. Why are you throwing a hazmat in here? Because we have inventive people in the city that like to make biodiesel in their own garages, that is not allowed. And then they spill it, and it becomes a big project. So that's why a lot of times you'll see, what's he talking hazmat for? Because we never know what people have in their houses. So that's always just a risk that's there, but we can't really calculate it.
If I could add one more thing, Councilman Borton. Part of that risk, as we look at risk, it's how many things do we have to send to that call to mitigate the issue? So even in a residential neighborhood with some hazard, it's going to take less resources to mitigate those emergencies than it would RC Willie with a fire, right? We're going to send more resources to that fire, because it's a much larger box-type building to mitigate that. Even though it might have sprinklers, we send more units initially to that, because it's just bigger hazards.
Interesting. Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Chief, appreciate you bringing some of this back. As though often the case, your responses then come with maybe a few additional questions.
Sure.
So I'm curious how, in the fire service or in Meridian, this, we've been talking a lot about travel time, it seems lately, and I'm curious, when you are taking those averages, and if you have the ability to separate travel time for calls within the city versus travel time for calls that are served within the rural district? And how, if those calls that are made out to the rural district are skewing our average in any way, shape, or form? And I don't need an answer on that now, and I hate that you will bring us back that data, and I hope that I won't have more questions from it, but I just think it's something we've been talking a lot about lately. So having real data about how a development in Meridian could potentially impact travel times and fire response times within Meridian, I think is really important. And to me, that also then goes back to the cost of delivering fire service. And what, if the fire service has a standard for this is what a cost per call is, and if you look at that as what it costs to deliver a response in the city versus a response to a residential that's within the county, but we're serving in the district? Do you get what I'm saying?
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure that we're really looking at what it costs is to our taxpayers, recognizing that our taxpayers help pay the cost of service to the rural, just like the rural's a partner with ours with building capital. I'm not trying to say one is more important than the other, I'm just trying to get a good sense of what our ongoing cost would be, and if those times within, if serving the rural is impacting our abilities to the clearest data about how a development would be impacted in Meridian.
Perfect. I got those two questions written down. Councilman Cavanagh will follow up on that.
Great. Thanks. And we can connect offline if it's beneficial.
Perfect.
Any further questions for the chief? All right. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it very much.
I think I'm still here.
Yeah, why don't you just go ahead and go on to 5D.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, council, and I'm going to maybe be a little all over the board with this. As you can imagine, it's been nonstop, been up since 1:30 this morning, and brain's getting a little fuzzy. But I want to provide an update with you on the efforts that have been going on with regards to COVID-19. This really started about a week, week and a half ago, discussions about this is coming, we need to prepare. So we laid out basically a three-phased approach for the city of Meridian. Phase one was information sharing, when it came to wash your hands, I mean, the messages we've all heard, and reinforcing that message. We prepped our responders with the coronavirus information education, made sure that we had the right PPE and equipment for our firefighters, our police officers, our paramedics. So it was really that preparing phase was phase one. We just went into phase two not too long ago, and that was with the first confirmed patient or victim. And since then, we've moved into basically phase 2.5, where you're now seeing further restrictions in limiting movement. I will say, I want to just thank Mayor Simson for his leadership. We did have on Friday an elected officials meeting, where we had the mayors throughout the valley, as well as commissioners in both counties there. I've been doing this 29 years. I've been through several different of these iterations of local disaster, H1N1, Ebola, H5N1, Y2K, the list kind of goes on, and I have never seen collaboration like this. This is a regional, valley-wide issue. It's not a city issue, it's not a county issue, it's going to become a statewide issue. So the more we can collaborate and share, I will tell you, we've prepared for disasters like this for a long time, but I also need to be honest, I've never seen something like this. This is different. But we're prepared for that, and we're moving forward as a group with that. So with the city, in kind of this 2.5 iteration, we're restricting down. You can see the seating behind, that's one of those moves. The work from home that you're seeing is one of those moves. I do believe we're absolutely doing the right thing. As we've looked at what others are doing that had this virus ahead of us, we're doing the right things, and we are prepared for the next step. From a first responder standpoint, I want to touch on that as well. We've been meeting, we had our first large multi-agency coordination group meeting on Tuesday. Typically, in a disaster or in a crisis, you would have a county EOC set up, that's very common. We recognize very early on that our two counties need to work together. We have cross-commute, cross-commerce, so let's start off working together. Those groups, made up of first responders, law enforcement from across the entire valley, have been working together since Tuesday. We met again today to ensure that our plans for emergency response to our communities are solid, and they are. We are prepared for that. We're also starting to look at the next layer, and what you would look at typically in an EOC, the next layer of what's coming. We know that deliveries are sometimes thin, so we want to make sure deliveries occur. Our homeless populations that we may have throughout our valley, are we taking care of them? Our high-risk populations, are we taking care of them? We're interacting almost daily with Central District Health and Southwest District Health, as well as the hospital systems, as well St. Al's, St. Luke's, and the VA Medical Center. So I feel confident we are ready if this gets worse. Our challenges right now, and we're working very hard on that, is supplies. As you can imagine, you've seen it in the news, some of the N95 masks that our responders wear. We started this with 21,000, so we had a good supply. We were able to outfit every fire department, every EMS department, as well as every law enforcement department. We're actively searching and working with vendors for more. I just had a phone call today from a vendor. The price of those masks is now $8 each, and we need about 10,000 if this thing continues. So do the math, that's $80,000. So there is some cost to this epidemic coming. Again, I feel very comfortable, and I'm just going to open it up for questions, because I kind of walked through where we're at today. I've just been meeting all day on this, and we'll be meeting all day tomorrow, and all day Thursday and Friday, and we're going to stay on topic. We have a good group of people, both on the elected official side, as well as the first responder community, working with all the partners throughout the Treasure Valley on this issue.
Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Chief, sorry. Appreciate your leadership. I know this has been a challenging time for everybody, but I'm sure for you and your staff especially. I got to guess, I have a couple of questions. You talked about being prepared for the next step. In your mind, what is that next step, and what do we as a community also need to be doing to be prepared for that?
I think the next logical step is to see multiple positive cases, and then the next step beyond that is to see clusters of cases. So Central District Health is tracking where those cases are. I think that is our next step. If we begin to see clusters of cases of positive tests, which we could see, that is going to just ramp up even more our efforts that we have already laid out. Chief Butterfield, the entire operations group, has been talking about how do we deploy in that situation? The other challenge is, we are the first responders in the community, and there are always chances that we are exposed at all times, even with PPE. They have a plan in place, that if we have folks that we have in self-quarantine, and we have a reduction in workforce, we are working collaboratively and together to make sure we are still covering the needs of the emergency response. That would be the next step.
Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Kind of to that point, you said we're on step 2.5 from, I guess, the community emergency preparators group. How many steps have you guys planned for? And is this clustering, is that step three? Help me understand kind of where you guys are visioning this thing could potentially go.
It's a really good question, Councilman Cavanagh. Let me first say, we take our lead from the health district. This is a healthcare crisis, a health emergency, so we take our lead there. We also take our lead in turn from the CDC, and those two are tied together recommendation-wise. You just saw us, the CDC, go from a 250 mask gathering recommendation down to 50. I understand there's a chance just tonight it changed to 10. I got to look, but that chance is there. So I think we would take our lead where the Central District Health says, now stay home, don't congregate at all, that is the next step. It's really that nobody move anywhere for a little bit. I know President Trump has addressed the country, and I think he's right. You know, the more we can limit movement, he mentioned the 15 days. There's health experts that have mentioned the 15 days of just stay at home, don't move around for 15 days, that'll help contain that spread.
Mr. Mayor, one more, if I may, then I'll be happy to join with Mike. I guess you're kind of getting to, as I work with staff all across the country, and so we're hearing in different states, you've got local, county, statewide mandated curfew quarantines, public cannot leave their homes. On the steps that you guys are planning for, where is that step? And I just, I don't want to create panic with our public, but I also think that what I'm hearing from lots of folks is that this is an inevitability. And so I'm just hoping that we as community leaders can be at least educating our public about what will trigger those types of responses, so that they can be prepared.
I think that the trigger really is the clusters, when we start to see clusters in the community. And again, not to pawn that off on the health district, but we really do take our lead from them. But that next step is coming out with strong recommendations, strong language in our messaging to stay home. At the, we're going to tell you, you have to stay home, that's a different conversation, that's an extreme. I think the president mentioned that, that that is a possibility, just to stop the spread of this. But that's an extreme measure, takes a lot of discussion, a lot of thought, and a lot of approval.
Of course.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Chief, there's been a variety of reports regarding the accessibility to testing kits, and it seems like there's a lot of confusion in the media right now about whether the individuals can go get tested on their own, or if they have to come through an emergency service, whether they can walk up to the hospital, or if they have to have a certain diagnosis. Can you just share with us, is there, are you comfortable with your ability to take individuals to the hospital and get those tests done in fairly short order?
Yes, I am comfortable. Just to add, I don't know the details, I've been in meetings all day, but I understand St. Luke's and Meridian opened up kind of a drive-through test. St. Luke's downtown is going to open up tomorrow. That capability, you know, talking with the medical community, and I understand why they're doing this, a lot of folks want to get tested. You know, there's that fear, right? We all have it. I mean, I think that's an honest answer. We all have that little bit of fear of what is this? So when you're not feeling well, you want that knowledge of what is this? The challenge with testing is, unless you're symptomatic to the levels that all of the physicians are recommending, the doc's going to say, you're not meeting that criteria. And I know that's super hard for our community to hear, it's hard for me to hear. But it makes sense medically, and so I think anybody that has that criteria met, there are tests out there to be tested. The test kits are not the problem right now. The delay in just the number of tests going into the labs, that's the challenge. They're turning those around as quick as they can, but they're getting a lot. So that's really kind of where the anxiety can live, because you're waiting for that result to come back. Either way, the treatment is pretty much the same, especially for the healthy folks in our community. They're going to stay at home, they're going to quarantine, and almost everybody's going to get through that. We need to make sure we take care of that risk population.
Are there any questions? Councilman Cavanagh.
One more, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe this is a question for Mr. Mayor, chief. You mentioned, we haven't seen anything like this, and you know, the only other time we've kind of experienced something really impactful to a community is our large snowstorm that we had, I think, three years ago. At the time, the council authorized budget authority to provide for extra plowing and for emergency responding. From your perspective, is that an action that we should be taking, or, Mr. Mayor, you're looking for us to do proactively? I just want to make sure that our emergency responders, the city, has the funds that they need to be able to do the things that you think is best to protect our community.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, I can answer that. We are working up a cost. We know there's going to be a cost to this. We didn't know, what does that cost look like, depending on how this progresses? We are developing a cost to bring back for your consideration at some point.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I'm curious if, you know, not to overly worry people, but to prepare them appropriately in the event that someone has a compromised immune system, they really are limited at this point to being at home, maybe they're elderly, you know, how does that look in terms of some of the resources we've heard in the community that are available? You know, ways for folks to get groceries delivered? I mean, have people started thinking about scaling that up, though, logistically?
We have. That's a great question as well. We do have a social services branch within that group that I talked about, that's working valleywide. As you can imagine, that ICS org chart is pretty deep on this. We have transportation, we have social services, we have homelessness. Some of those boxes are being filled by people who are focusing on that very thing. The challenge is, with this one, this is unlike what we have faced before. So we've prepared for earthquakes. I know who to call if we have an earthquake. I know who to put in the boxes, who to bring in. This one's so much different, because you have so many different groups involved in trying to mitigate this. So it's, Joe Lombardo's doing a great job from Maeda County Emergency Management in bringing the right people to the table to have those conversations. So we do have a social services branch on that. And I think it's a good reminder, I'll just grab the dice for a little bit. It's a great reminder, as we're all running to the grocery stores to try and get lucky and buy toilet paper, because it's out. It is a great time to make sure your neighbor's okay, and that's going to help get us through as well. If you've got toilet paper and they don't, if you've got produce and they don't, if you've got anything and they don't, it's a great time to be a community and to make sure that we're helping each other out. And I think, I think over time, that message is going to continue to resonate and continue to build, knowing that we can get through this together, and I think that'll be a message we continue to send.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
You know, we have, I think, in the city, because of our development application process, we have really good connection through Nextdoor. And just a comment, or maybe something to brainstorm about, would be a way to use some of those forums, if this does escalate into a phase three, as something that's not a good scenario. You know, having some kind of a plan or a central place that people could contact for help if they did need to get groceries, or they did need help with something, I think would, it would be great if we could get to that point.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the chief?
It'd be another update next week, I'm guessing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
With that, we'll move on to items, into our action items for this evening. Item 6A, public hearing for Ever Surgical Institute, H-2020-013. Open this public hearing with staff comment.
Good evening, thank you for having me. Item 6A is for Ever Surgical Institute. Institute is a request to vacate plat note number seven on the mystery view subdivision restricting Lot 2, Block 1 to a single story structure, as you can see here, Lot 2, Block 1, by Jeremy Telford, who is in attendance here tonight. The plat note and subsequent story restriction was added to the approval in 2002. However, the single story restriction is not necessarily effective as it did not limit the overall height of the building. So as a single story or a two-story building, it could be built at 35 feet currently with the plat note or without. The applicant is proposing to build a 15,800 square foot ambulatory surgical center on this property under the maximum height of the 35 feet. If the plat note is to remain, he states he will have to build the property approximately 56 feet from properties, to the residential properties to the north. If the plat note is vacated, the applicant states the same amount of building, same square footage can be built 65 feet further away, which would bring it to about 120 square, or 120 feet away from the residential properties and would allow an additional 26 more parking spaces. In addition, the applicant has discussed this proposal with each of the residential neighbors that abut the property. Sorry, this is for the last comment I made. The applicant has discussed this proposal with each of the residential neighbors that abut this property to the north and has garnered support from each of them as can be seen in my staff report from the non-opposition statements that each of them signed. They all agree that they'd rather have a two-story building further away rather than a one-story building closer to them. To reiterate, the landscape buffer requirement for this zone against residential uses is 20 feet. So this applicant or any applicant could theoretically build a 35-foot tall building at the 20-foot buffer line with, you know, meeting all code requirements. This applicant does not want to do that as he wants to be a good neighbor. Staff is recommending approval of the request to vacate plat note number seven as proposed by the applicant as the vacation will allow the building to be the same size on a smaller footprint located further away from the residential properties and therefore meeting the original intent of the plat note. No further comment.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Burt.
Not a question, but a comment. I think this is your first presentation to council, right?
Yes, sir, it is.
Are you a little bit nervous?
Just a little bit.
You're doing great, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Pleasure to meet you.
Pleasure to meet you, all of you. Thank you.
Okay, will the applicant like to come forward?
Do I, do I need to state my name and address? My name is Jeremy Telford. I reside at 2048 West Estante Street in Meridian, Idaho. Mayor and Councilmen, thank you for having me. I'm gonna plug in here and I'm just gonna show you more out of, just so you guys understand why we're doing this and also what we're doing. This is gonna be approximately a $6 million building that we plan to build within the next year. Can we toggle for? For those of you, ambulatory surgical centers are a popular trend right now in surgical services for medicine. Apart from hospitals, ambulatory surgical centers allow doctors to actually own their own facility and capture some of those facility fees. Last year, over, I believe it was $80 billion was saved on, by Medicare nationwide by shifting minor surgeries that don't necessarily have to be achieved in a hospital to ambulatory surgical centers because nowadays, what used to be a three-week stay in a hospital, people walk out of two hours later. And so the word ambulatory, meaning in, or outpatient, is just the, the product that we're putting here. The, the building is located just to the west of St. Luke's, Meridian. It's the, to the left down here on the bottom is also the Surgery Center, or Surgical Center of Idaho and the Idaho Urological Institute. And so very, very good mix. The situation that we found, this is just a comparison of the two layouts. Originally, we were trying to build this building, part of, half of it will be the ASC, the other half will actually be medical offices for the surgeons. And as the building started to grow a little bit, we just got pinched where we were starting to sacrifice either elements that we needed within the project or parking. And so by doing this, as a two-story building, if you look at the two elevations on the bottom, you have to really look at it for a second before you realize which one's the two-story and which one's the single story. And so I went to the neighbors, I actually showed them this, wrote up a statement of non-opposition before we spent the money to redesign the building and every contiguous residential neighbor showed no opposition to it. They actually encouraged it just because it moves the building further away from the residences, it adds additional parking and it just, it just kind of works. And so that's about it. That's the layout on the inside and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Schrader.
Just a comment, thank you. It's rare and so refreshing and nice to have a development application before us where I, not, not that it doesn't happen a lot of the time, but where you really got ahead of something and worked with the neighbors before coming before us and I just really want to say how much we appreciate that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Very well done. Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Burt.
Yeah, I'm absolutely in favor of this application. I love the fact that you reached out, like Counselwoman Schrader said, to the local, to the neighbors and got their blessing. You didn't have to do that, but one of the things in these type of developments is, one of the unattended consequences of these type is, is parking. You know, sometimes you get something that's a business that moves in or whatever that's really popular and hogs all the, the parking and you just, it meets code and you know, that's the reason why it's approved, but you know, to give, to, to provide more parking is key, especially in this, in this neck of the woods. I believe it's gonna be, the part, extra parking would be a really big deal.
I, I appreciate that. We're, as shown in the numbers down on the bottom, just by building it as a two-story building, which, which doesn't save us really any costs because building it as a single-story building, we have more roof space, more foundation. Going two-story, we now have to build two stairwells, elevator systems. I mean, it's, so it's not anything that we're trying to do from a cost perspective, but it does add 26 parking spaces. And already, if you look at the bottom here, there's 11 parking spaces on the south side of that building. Those parking spaces are actually existing already and so they are under a temporary easement with the building next to us. And so I've already been working as well with the building owner next to us to try and alleviate his concerns because as soon as we start development, those become our parking spaces. And he called and he said, you're taking our parking spaces. I said, yeah, but the reason you're getting a notice is because I'm trying to build this with 26 more parking spaces than if you say no. So he was, he jumped on board pretty quick.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Burt.
I, I drive down that road quite a bit and you know, if you, if you were to drive a little bit further down the road, there, there's a brand new assisted living center, memory care center down, and their parking's already full and they're already, you know, starting to park on the, on the streets and ACHD got involved and they're putting up signs and so anytime that you can provide more parking is greatly appreciated, so bravo.
And if I can make one more comment, the good news, if you look at this, a two-story nature of an ambulatory surgical center, that means that we have medical offices for surgeons above the surgery center. And even though we have that much space, the good news is surgeons are never in their office and in the operating room at the same time. And so the actual traffic demand of people coming to have surgeries in a day, we, we are predicting that, you know, if the business plan goes well, we could provide somewhere between eight to 12 surgeries per day in the surgery center, which creates a trip load that's miniscule. I mean, that's 15 minutes of a Starbucks throughout an entire day of business in this building. And so we should have a very low tra, parking need anyways, but we want to make sure that we're a good neighbor in having that.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Cavanagh.
Mr. Telford, appreciate you being here. To your point, I think this type of project is so needed throughout our country and is obviously a, a great addition to kind of that medical area that, that's kind of sprung up around St. Luke's. I'm just curious if, because I don't know when we'll, if we'll see you again on this. Hours of operation, I mean, I always think of any time I've ever went for surgery, I gotta be there like at 3:30, 4:00, 4:30 in the morning, same type of approach with this business model?
Yeah, hours of operation fall within the, the guidelines for limited office, which I believe at 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM is regular hours of operation Monday through Friday. There will be limited operating hours outside of those hours for cleaning staff, for, on, on weekends, we may have some meetings for bariatric patients who have had weight loss surgery and do support groups on the weekends, other than that. And we, there, we may in occasion have a customer that has to stay later just as medical needs permit, but regular operating hours will fall within the limits or the guidelines.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, appreciate the project.
Okay.
Counsel, any further questions for applicant?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, do we have anyone sign up to testify?
Mr. Mayor, no one signed in in advance.
Okay, no one to sign up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to testify on this project?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Burt.
I move that we close the public hearing for H-2020-0013.
Second.
I have a motion of second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Counselman Burt.
I move that we approve item number H-2020-0013.
Second.
I have a motion of a second to approve the item. Is there any discussion on the motion? None, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion's approved too. Thank you. Item 6 speeds, a public hearing continued from March 10th, 2020 for Gray Cliff Estates subdivision. I'll turn this over for staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you just mentioned, Mr. Mayor, this project was continued from last week. I'd like to get some clarifying information from the West Ada School District and the Fire Department. I will turn it over in just a second to Chief Bonjorno, but I do want to provide you the updated information from the school district. I'm gonna slide. So as you can see on the screen, we did receive some supplemental information from, and this is in the staff, updated staff report that Sonia prepared as well, but we did receive some updated enrollment information from the school district. Hopefully this answers some of the questions you had last week from them. Maybe we should just jump back real quick, it wasn't that long ago, but just to reorient you, the project is on the, about a quarter mile west of Meridian Road, south of Harris Street, between Amity and Victory Roads. So there's the updated school district information. Like I said before, I'll turn it over to the chief unless you have any questions on school district enrollment information or anything else, I guess, in the staff report for that matter.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Schrader.
Just to check in, I had sent a series of follow-up questions. Did the school district respond to those? They, they, I was, they were hopeful in nature of hoping what we'd ideally receive. I do appreciate the update, I think it is very helpful, but was curious if they provided any further detail.
So, Mr. Mayor, Counselwoman Schrader, Counselwoman Schrader, I have not seen that, but I did not ask Sonia if there were, if, if some of your other questions, comments, concerns were addressed by them or not. I will provide that if that's the case, but I'm not privy to the real answer there, but I'll do some further digging.
Mr. Mayor, we did provide that to Ms. McKay too, so she may have information from the school district as well.
Are there any further questions for staff at this time? Okay, the applicant would like to come forward?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to go ahead and put my two cents in her way until she's done?
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. All right. So I apologize for not being here last week, I was at a conference, learning about the fire code and the building code. So my original report was written back in November and so since that time, a lot of this has, has changed. And with that new response time map that we had that came out, I went ahead and rewrote my report from when I was sitting in Las Vegas. And so you, you all should have, in the staff report are my updated comments. So at this point, we're good with the response time. At this time, the reliability rating, Station 6 is now open. At the time, when I initially wrote my first report, Station 6 was not open yet. So 6 is open, we don't have a reliability rating yet on that station as it just opened. Probably by June, we should have a reliability rating where it's gonna be sitting. My, my, I would imagine it's gonna be pretty high. So I don't think we have a response reliability issue at this point with that project. I have been in communication with Becky for the last four days and the only really outstanding problem, project, issue, I guess, that she's working on is just secondary access. The problem is, is you have Kentucky Ridge that comes up and you have Harris that comes in and the problem is they both converge to one point. And so with the accesses that are proposed, they're too close together. We don't meet the half the distance of the diagonal rule. And so she's been working with Conger, Mr. Conger, to create a temporary secondary access and Becky can talk about that when she comes up. And then one other comment that I sent to council also is Scott Coliani, Lieutenant Coliani and I both had concerns when the first project came in, Mr. Congress project, that we had concerns with not having a light at Harris, just because making left turns. The, the other problem is you're cresting a hill and you're coming down a hill right at Harris. And so the people coming up Meridian Road at 55 miles an hour and then you've got people making left-hand turns, it, it's gonna be a very dangerous intersection. And so with Stapleton coming, the multifamily coming and this project that's kind of all together, that intersection is gonna be rapidly overwhelmed and fire and police both have concerns about not having a signal.
Thank you, chief. Counsel, any questions? All right. Becky, now we'd love for you to come up.
I'm being safe, look at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions, 1029 North Rosario, Meridian. I'm here representing Mr. Centers on this project that's before you, the Gray Cliff Project. As Caleb indicated, we were deferred for one week to obtain additional information for the council in order for them to make a determination on this project. One, Mr. Yocum indicated that the letter that was sent and was part of the staff report was outdated. We all kind of questioned why, why wasn't Victory Middle School in there when we know it's operational right there on, on, on Stafford or Strat, Stafford Street? What is it? Stoddard. Stoddard and Stratford, I always get them mixed up. And so I emailed Joe myself, the letter was shot out, Sonia beat me to him. Joe indicated that, as you can see on the overhead, that, that Mary McPherson has a capacity of 500, however, during the 2021 school year, they're increasing that capacity to 600. They currently have an enrollment of 551. Victory Middle has an enrollment of 971 with a capacity of 1,000. Meridian High has an enrollment of 1,994 with a capacity of 2,400. The other thing that, that we received, that we did send over to the staff was the, the West Ada Future School map, which indicates that Blue Valley Elementary is, they already have the school site within the South Ridge subdivision. They've had that school site for many, many years. When I initially had met with Joe, with the Meridian, or it was Meridian School District at the time, they'd indicated they did not want a site within our project or within any of Mr. Centers' projects due to the fact that they already had the middle school site there for Victory Middle and that the Blue Valley Elementary site was proposed within South Ridge. We did get a copy, they already have a site plan for Blue Valley Elementary. They have an engineer, architect online. The email I received from Joe Yocum said that it is in the bond issue for May and that they believe that with the addition of that elementary site, that they will be able to adequately serve this area and these proposed developments. Secondly, the question arose as far as the response time because we did have some variation in what Chief Bonjorno had in his initial November comments and what we have today now that Station 6 is online and operational. As, as Chief Bonjorno indicated, the response time is good, we fall within the five-minute boundary as their goal. And so that's, that's good news. The secondary access issue, initially we did meet with the adjoining development, the Stapleton Estates, which is currently under construction. I met with Mr. Conger. Mr. Conger Mr. Conger did, we had initially asked for a public street connection. I also contacted Ada County Highway District, sent them a lengthy email stating that we would like to have some interconnection of our public streets. Ada County Highway District, Kristi Little emailed me back and also called me and said that their primary concern with a public street connection was the fact that Harris is the mid-mile collector with the anticipation that that will be signalized. Our project will be participating in the cost of that signal to the extent of approximately thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. And then Stapleton will be participating twenty-five percent of the cost of that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar signal. Then the projects to the east, which is the Cabana Ridge, they're going to be the east leg of that Harris Street signal. They'll be participating. And so according to Mindy Wallace, the Ada County Highway District already has all parties in agreement, accepting those conditions of approval for an extended period of time, that they all will participate. When the warrant for that signal is triggered, then ACHD, whoever triggers that warrant, whether it's my client, whether it's the Stapleton development, they will be responsible for installing that signal. All of the backbone for that signal has been installed, and Mr. Centers has already, with his Biltmore project, been required to, he's installed a southbound D cell lane to turn into Harris. We've also installed a left-hand turn, right-hand turn, where we were, we had the room within the right-of-way to expand that. And Mr. Centers was required by Ada County Highway District to run fiber optic from the Amity, existing Amity signal to the future signal at Harris, all the way down to Victory. And the reason being is there was an existing fiber optic line. It only had ten feet of excess cable. And in order to widen the intersection so we could have a left-out and a right-out, we had to move that signal box over, that future box. So we had to run a mile of fiber optic cable. So we have, we have obviously been doing what we can. He's been spending his money to make sure that everything's there for that signal. When that warrant's met, it's going to go in. I agree with Chief Bonjorno that as we get more traffic on Harris Street, that warrant will be met. I think there's only about four hundred, four hundred trips right now or less than that. But we are obviously cognizant of the need for that signal, and we are participating financially to make sure that that happens. And like I said, when that warrant's met, ACHD will require it. As far as the secondary access, I met with Mr. Conger initially when he had his first concept plan that he submitted to the city of Meridian. We worked out an emergency vehicle access since ACHD did not want us to have a vehicular permanent access. Then the council asked him to redesign his project. When he redesigned his project, it kind of shifted that emergency access a little bit further north. When Chief Bonjorno looked at that interconnection for the emergency access, he wants it further south. So we are working with Mr. Conger. We will continue to work with Chief Bonjorno to meet the requirements of the International Fire Code for the secondary access. If we can't meet that, then we are capped at thirty dwelling units as according to the International Fire Code. Lastly, the question came up about the park, future park site. I did receive an email from the Parks Department. They want to start that dialogue as far as getting that parks agreement in place for the neighborhood park. I did look at my calculations. I think Councilman Peralta asked me the question, okay, if you don't develop the one point six nine acres that is a component of that overall park site, where do you stand in your percentage of open space? Because we have a little bit over seventeen percent. I pull that one point six nine out, I'm at fourteen percent open space. So I still exceed the required ten percent. The neighborhood park, I didn't, I did not have this information for you when I was here before. It is going to be ten point nine three acres total. That is what the neighborhood park. Eight point two four acres comes from our Brundage development that Mr. Centers has, and we already have approval for that project. One acre comes from the Biltmore project, which we already have entitled, and we have two, three phases built. And one point six nine acres comes from Gray Cliff. In looking at that, we want to develop that in its entirety because we do have to pipe a portion of the Sundell lateral through that property. We will also have to work with the Parks Department as far as elevations, the type of irrigation system, the type of seed they want. So we've agreed with the Parks Commission that we will, when we get all the components put together and we get to that point, we're going to put the sprinkler system in, we're going to green it up, we're going to get it rolling, and then when their budget allows for them to take it over, and then they will have it. We have a concept plan that's on it on the Parks property based on the plans that they gave us to model. But obviously, your parks and what your needs are change over time. So I assume that when we reach the point that we want, that we're going to develop the park, they may want a little bit of tweaking to that concept plan. We've got a good project here. We comply with the medium density. What we're doing here is obviously trying to stay competitive and meet the needs of the marketplace. We have a project that's just to the east of us that has almost seven dwelling units per acre. We're at four point eight nine. So we're not pushing that envelope. We are within the parameters of that medium-density residential for our single family. We've upped our open space. We've improved our amenity to be a pool facility and playground facility from just a playground. And I think we had bocce ball. We still have sixteen hundred and sixty-eight linear feet of multi-use pathway that we will install. We requested that the council allow us to install it with Phase Four. We have been in contact with the Williams Pipeline. We anticipate that they are going to come through and do an upgrade. So we need to allow them to have an opportunity to do that. Mr. Centers does not want to install that too early. So we ask that the council give us that latitude to install the multi-use pathway and the Williams Pipeline seventy-five-foot landscape corridor with our Phase Four. Obviously, if they get in there before that and Mr. Centers decides he wants to move that forward, we just don't want to go ahead of the Williams Pipeline. We ask the council for their support. We think we've got a great project, and we're excited to get going. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Council on questions. Councilman Peralta.
I just wanted to clarify my question. Thank you for answering my question about the open space. The piece of that that was significant for me was that once or if this were to become a community park, then, then in my mind, it's no longer an amenity that belongs to that, to your development. Now that's something that belongs to the whole city. And I would be hesitant to, you know, I feel like it's important that whatever open spaces are included in each of these applications in this whole area still meets that minimum outside of what is going to be of the ten point nine three acres that, that'll be the neighborhood park. Because again, to those residents, that's not an amenity that's just exclusive to them at that point. So that was, that was the purpose of that. So thank you for answering that question for me. I wondered if you could give some timeframes on, on the light at Harris. I know that that's not set yet, but it sounds like the, all of the players are identified, the funds are going to be accessible. Any idea on when that installation occurs in relationship to your project development? What phase it might be in? How many homes do you think will be completed at that point?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Peralta, in my conversations with Ada County Highway District, the critical thing to the light was getting additional right-of-way for Harris to the south within the Stapleton development. The previous council members placed a condition of approval on Stapleton that they could build Phase One and have a collector going directly out to Meridian Road, but Phase Two had to include a secondary connection and expansion of Harris Street. So that is going to be the prerequisite to that signal going in. We obviously can't signalize an intersection that we can't build out as a full-blown collector. We've done as much widening as we can with the existing right-of-way, and that was kind of a throwaway because the final expansion will take place with Stapleton. So ACHD, in my conversations with Kristi Little and Mindy Wallace, have said that they were, they are going to be monitoring Harris and those traffic counts. Obviously, the north-south warrant is met with the high volume on Meridian Road. It's the fact that we only have a west leg of Harris. You're going to see that when that east leg of Harris comes in. But, but ACHD has already, you know, indicated that that's a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar signal and that they want it to go in, obviously, sooner than later. They see the importance of that mid-mile collector. So I, the warrants are a complicated thing. There's, you know, I don't know, twenty-five different criteria that they evaluate to meet the warrant. So for me to say, oh, you know, when I hit my, my fiftieth house, I'm going to trigger the warrant, I, I can't say that because I don't know how many homes Stapleton is going to have occupied. Their first phase is under construction, so I assume they'll be online here probably early summer. And they may trigger the warrant with the second phase. We are required with our first phase to put up all of our proportionate share with our first phase because ACHD wants those monies there. So when it's triggered, the monies are there and it can be spent. So, you know, I want to assure the council that, you know, we've, we've stressed that we want the signal too. Obviously, it will help our sales and create relief for Kentucky Way because, you know, some people are using the Kentucky Way to get down to Victory so they can go out to Meridian Road and make a left-hand turn. Right now, the current volumes do not meet the warrant. Thank you.
Council, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Becky, thanks for coming back for another week, working with us to get that better, more clear data, I guess I should say. I know the conversation about the park is, is really for another day, but you indicated in your testimony that the Parks Department is telling you they, they want to move forward, then, with taking it as a city park? Is that what I heard you say?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, the email that I received is they want to get the agreement in place so that the criteria, the timing, and, and all the provisions of what my client's providing and the timing of when the city parks budget allows it, everything will be memorialized in that agreement, which I do believe my client signs, and it has to be approved by the council after the Parks Commission approves it. So that's what they want to move forward. And, and that this will be kind of a, you know, what they call a jewel in that multi-use pathway that's going to run all the way from Meridian Road over to Linder. So that will be, you know, a central activity center. We are allowed to put like benches along the multi-use pathway. I can't plant trees, but we do have to mitigate. We have an alternative compliance that was approved by the council with our original design. So every tree that I can't plant within that Williams Pipeline, I have to put in the park.
Okay.
Or either give the parks the money.
Council, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Becky, would, would a condition with regards to the pathway be acceptable that says the pathway is to be done during Phase Two unless the Williams Pipeline upgrade is not completed, at which point it would be in Phase Four? It would seem to be, it sounds like the intent is to do it in Phase Two if it was possible, but let's not be wasteful and have it done twice, which makes total sense, so.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, Sherry Stiles, our other planner at my office, has been in contact with the Salt Lake office. They have a, a new gal that's in charge. She'd indicated to Sherry that they are running behind schedule. She could not give us any definitive date, although they have, we've, we've provided them all of our site plans. I even, I even gave them other maps of projects along that, that corridor of their pipelines so they can plan ahead. I did that four years ago. And we've seen no design, no timeline. So I guess, you know, from my client's perspective, he would like to leave it at Phase Four because he just, he's just concerned that, you know, they're, they're, they're not, they don't move quickly.
Sure. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
We might have not connected on that. I think I was just trying to find a middle ground that if the stars aligned and things got done quicker, then there'd be an opportunity to do it earlier, but yet you're not boxed in with the earlier requirements. So if it was, you would do it in Phase Two unless the upgrades are not yet completed, at which time it would then be Phase Four.
And I guess we, we did talk about that. We talked, my client and I spoke about that on the phone. We didn't have a face-to-face meeting because it's not recommended, but we talked about that on the phone. We have to pipe some additional Sundell lateral that's north of Harris that also includes, because that, that, not only does that multi-use pathway go, there, dang it. Okay, this'll work. Not only does that multi-use pathway go along here, but it goes north of Harris. And so we've piped the Sundell lateral from all, from here all the way up to this point. So we have additional piping that needs to take place, and so the multi-use pathway goes through here through the park site. If I install this section, the discussion we had today, Mr. Center says, where does it go? I mean, until we get the ten point nine eight acre park site developed, it would just stop right here at Harris. So it's not, I guess, not leading to anything or, so his opinion is, he thinks that it is best that he include that multi-use pathway with the multifamily component. And the question also was brought up about the multifamily component. We do have a condition of approval that says that all of our marketing information, our concept plans shall show the multifamily. Because I think one of the councilmen said, we want to make sure that the single-family residents are fully aware that that multifamily component is already part of the DA, that it's already zoned R forty. So there, we have two conditions in there that address that to make sure that we communicate that to all potential buyers. But we, Councilman Borton, we would like to leave it within Phase Four. Thank you.
Becky, just to follow up on that question, under that type of scenario, are you saying that until the Williams Pipeline is approved, Phase Four will never be completed?
Well, I think, I think that's obviously going to kind of hinge on that. I mean, it's kind of a chicken and egg thing because that is obviously part of, you know, part of our, one of our amenities in addition to our pool facility and our playground that the multi-use pathway is one of our amenities. So, you know, we're obviously going to stay on them. We've started our, you know, a dialogue with this new representative. We've started our, you know, a dialogue with this new representative out of Salt Lake. I'm trying to get them to be proactive. I've talked to them about Meridian and the growth that's taking place, and so to answer your question, I, I kind of think we, you know, we might have to, we may have to wait on them.
Because the, the next question I would ask, if that's the case, what's your open space percentage without Phase Four completed, if it were to be 10 years?
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe it will be 10 years.
You, you already said it's been four years and you haven't even heard, heard back.
It's been four years.
So just, just curious if that's the case.
Right.
What, what's the scenario for Phase One, Two, and Three with Phase Four never being done and no open space being put into that area?
The way the representative explained it to us is once the rooftops start going up, that's when it triggers their design teams to start a design for their upgrade, and then it goes into their budget. So one of the comments was that they were X number of homes, I guess is a trigger point within a certain radius. I don't believe it'll be 10 years from what the information they've given us. Four years have gone by, we haven't put any homes next to it, neither has Stapleton. So the gentleman that I was working with out of Salt Lake said, you know, whatever information you can give me will help me argue to my superiors to make this a priority. And we've provided them additional information beyond our own project to show what's happening in South Meridian along this corridor. So now that Stapleton is under construction, they're going to have to get off the dime. I don't see it dragging out 10 years, sir.
Well, I'm going to refrain from my comments on that, and I'll, Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, and Becky, your, your comment about the chicken and the egg, I've been mulling over Councilman Borton's, you know, well, if, if it happens sooner, we have to wait till Phase Four, why not Phase Two if, or upon completion? And then I thought, well, what about if we condition that in the, in the event Williams Pipeline comes in, they get it done, and upon, that would go in upon the start of Phase Four. Because then, if they've completed that, you can go ahead and start Phase Four. There's the chicken and the egg, the egg is hatched, you're going to have a chick here pretty soon, and then you can continue building with that. So it, we don't have to wait till the completion, but we now know, okay, they've completed their portion of it, they're done, you guys are moving forward, and, and maybe that's, that's the way around all this. I, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, my client is agreeable to that. Yes, sir. We obviously, you know, want to make sure that we get our amenities in a timely fashion to provide as much recreation for this section as a whole, the community as a whole, and not just our own development.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Mr. Mayor, Becky, to that point, though, if we've heard tonight is that it's possible that Phase Four never begins, so if Phase Four never begins, building the pathway at the beginning of a phase that never is actually going to begin, we're still back at the same place with the chicken and the egg. I guess to further refine that, I mean, to me, what everyone's trying to get is, we want to make sure this pathway is built. I think that you've got a council that's sympathetic to the issue that you presented of concern, which is we don't want to build this twice, and I, I'm sympathetic to that. But being very frank from our community standpoint, I'd rather be built twice than never built at all.
Yes, sir.
So help us get to a place of comfort where we have a good understanding that this is going to be built in a relatively shorter timeframe. I, I recognize what you're saying, it's not going to be 10 years, so help me understand the when so that I can get a greater level of comfort around this pathway issue. Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cavanagh.
Take a 10-minute recess so I can use the restroom.
Yeah, can I consult with my client? I don't want to make any commitments on his part, it's his money, not mine.
Yeah, council, let's take a 10-minute, we'll reconvene at 7:45.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor.
All right, and I'll call us out of recess. Okay, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions. So I did consult with, with my client, Mr. Centers. I did consult with Caleb on the planning department and their ability to track it. So what, what we would like to do is, prior to any occupancy of any building permit within Phase Three, we will install the pathway if the Williams Pipeline has already done their upgrade. And that, Caleb has indicated they can track and put in as a solid condition that would not be missed.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Borton.
Thank you, Becky, for that clarification, willingness to do that. One, one question, if, if hypothetical, if that does not happen, are you still willing to do it at the beginning of Phase Four like you mentioned earlier?
Yes, sir. Absolutely, at the latest. We'll just have to do it. We're, we're not going to allow 10 years to, we'll just have to do it. Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you, appreciate. I'm glad we're all on the same page, 10 years doesn't make a lot of sense. Is you and your client comfortable with a date certain? Be built by, if, if it's not, on, if the pipeline's not done, when? I mean, I think that's, that's the big question. If the pipeline isn't getting built and you're not moving forth with Phase Four, because you said you're not going to like to move forth with Phase Four until the pipeline's done, then the when?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, in my conversations and my staff's conversations with the Williams Pipeline, they are assuring us that they are getting ready to start design. They indicate that they're, they're within 27 building permits or 27 homes, and then that triggers their upgrade.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Becky, I'm, I'm not trying to jam you up, I'm, I'm just trying to get a, a clear of an answer as possible.
So I, I would like it...
Because our, our DA's with you, it's not with them.
Yep.
So help me understand.
So, so based on the information they've given me, that their backs are up against the wall, they have to take action. They have not taken any action, even though preliminary plats have been approved along the corridor. The trigger is when the homes actually physically go up. That's when, under federal regulations, they go in, they do their upgrade, and go to a Class One pipe, is what they call it. Secondly, we will construct it, our pathway, hill or high water, with Phase Four at the latest. And Phase Three, if the pipeline's upgraded, then prior to any occupancy within the Phase Three, we will install it. So we've got... You don't like that? Do you got a better idea?
Yeah, I can't count.
Mr. Mayor, I just would like my question answered, Becky. I, I'm not trying to, to, to go rounds with you here, but I'm, I'm asking for a, a timeline, and, and I am not getting that, and that's really frustrating for me.
Oh, a timeline, okay. A time, so you're phasing, phasing, not timeline.
In fact, if I could help maybe from that standpoint.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think the concern is, if Phase Four is never built, you're essentially asking for approval to never have to build this. That, I think that's the end result. So the question, if you feel so confident in your assurance of what you're hearing from Williams Pipeline, I think council's looking for an assurance on a date, because if the houses start going up and you tell us they must do it under federal guidelines, then it sounds like you should be able to give me an assurance based upon the assurance that you're receiving from the Williams Pipeline and the date that you will construct this open space pathway even before... even before Phase Four, where it never to be built.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, I see what you're getting at. So our timeline is to roll into design right now on Phase One. And then, Mr. Centers, we have typically, he builds a phase a year. So Phase, we've got three years for Phase One, Two, and Three. Based on, that's based on current market conditions and what he anticipates for the absorption out there. So, three years. Obviously, the multifamily component, he's had people that have been very interested in it. He's also contemplated building it himself. And he likes to keep his projects, obviously, within his building team. And so, I will be coming back with a conditional use permit on that multifamily. The Plan Zoning Commission said, their comment to us is, "We'd like to see that sooner than later." Because we know the more rooftops that go up, obviously, the more troubled people become about those conditional uses for the multifamily. So, we are cognizant of that. So I don't think you need to be concerned that we're going to push that out a long ways.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you, Becky. Is there, maybe to speak to council members, question, you know, is there just a very, very generous outside date? That's like a no-brainer that you could agree to, that by the certain date, you'll build it? I mean, that's what I'm wondering, isn't there like a commercially reasonable assumption we could make about, really, an outside date where you could agree to, or your client could agree to build it by?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, I wish I could give you a definitive date, but I don't control the Williams Pipeline. Now, all I have to go, all I have to go off of is what they're telling me out of their Salt Lake office, which is in charge of this. I mean, you know, by 2024, that pipeline's going to be in? I don't know. I think so, from what they're telling me, that they've got to get off the dime and get under design and put this in their budget and get it done.
Mr. Mayor.
Follow-up. Councilwoman Schrader.
I guess I'm just trying to brainstorm, but I'm thinking, you know, there should be some date that clearly is far outside of any of your phasing plans, that, you know, seven years from now or something, or eight years, you know? I hope that's not the case, that it's not like a 10-year delay or something goes wrong, but we don't know, you know, we can't control the future, we don't know what's going to happen. I think council would just feel good to know that one day, it's going to be built no matter what. I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I'm just trying to brainstorm, is there some outside date that's just really easy for everyone to agree on, because, you know, by that point, it's all figured out?
And if I, I think that there, that is where we're really getting to, because otherwise, you're essentially asking council to approve a subdivision that could never have open space, other than a community pool. If Phase Four never gets built, ever, which is a possibility, especially if your client sells it, this subdivision is left with zero to no open space out of their control.
Five years?
So, let's take some public testimony, if there's any.
2025, 2026, I guess I leave it up to the purview of the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying.
Mr. Mayor and Becky, I was just trying to make sure I understand, your offer, prior to occupancy of Phase Three and with completion of the Williams Pipeline?
Yes, sir.
So, if they don't complete it, I'm trying to figure out, prior to occupancy of Phase Three, there's no occupancy of Phase Three. Is that, is that the logic? I mean, or, if they don't complete it, if, prior to occupancy of Phase Three, because I can read this a couple way, and with completion of Williams Pipeline, you will do it. The alternate, the converse kind of is, if you want to move forward with occupancy of Phase Three, you'll put the pathway in. I wasn't sure which way to go with that, with that statement, so can you enlighten me a little bit on that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Hoagland, so I think what we, what we're trying to do is that, if the Williams Pipeline upgrades it, then we will install the pathway and the landscape in along the 75-foot corridor, prior to any issuance of an occupancy within Phase Four. If, if at that time, there is no upgrade, then we will have to install it with Phase Four.
Thank you, Becky, and Mr. Mayor, just to follow up, yeah, you meant Phase Three initially, yes.
I mean, Phase Three, Phase Four, yes. Sorry, I've been up for 17 hours. I worked 17 hours yesterday, sorry. I was trying to get my people all working remotely, and it's been a chore.
So, it's just a matter of the phasing, we understand that typically, it's Phase One, Phase A Year approximately. You know, of course, understanding too, when I served previously in '09 and '10, those were not good times. And I thought the only thing council did for the longest time was approve extensions of plats, because no one was building anything, and it was for a couple of years, so. And if you don't have the rooftops, I guess you don't have the people there to utilize the pathways. So, I'm not quite so hung up on saying it'll be done by. If there's development, we want it done by, and that's why I was trying to work with the phasing and make sure that fits with the rooftops. But, and I think, I think we're close, but we just need to make sure we're all on the same page.
And, and Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Hoagland, from what their representative in Salt Lake has told us, the Stapleton Phase One development will, when those homes go vertical, that will trigger it. Then they have to, under the federal regulations, then design and upgrade. Because that defines their classification of the pipe, whether it's in ag ground or urban ground.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Follow-up on Councilman Hoagland's clarification of that condition, and your earlier remarks, would something be satisfactory that the pathway would be fully installed and developed at the earlier of the condition that Councilman Hoagland described, or September 1st, 2025?
Yes, sir.
Whichever were to occur first, it would be complete by?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, you guys are making such progress there. Just letting you know, we don't have like some magic light bulb that goes off September 25th, 2025, if it hasn't been, and then I don't have a stick to hit her with to say, hey, it's not done. So I don't know what the expectation is there, just, it could potentially be a condition that I can enforce. Because I don't, there's no trigger, there's a date, right, but I don't have a real, I don't have a hammer or anything to do, or withhold, I can withhold occupancy or building permits, or not sign a plat. When a date comes, I don't have anything but to say, hey, remember that paper you signed?
To that point, and that's my concern, again, I don't have a vote, so this is all what you guys want to do, that tying all the open space to the Phase Four, which may or may not be built by this developer or part of this phase, and granted, any phase could be sold off, that's a real struggle or challenge to approve a subdivision with that situation. I understand the, you need the rooftops and whatnot. My recommendation would be at least to include it as part of Phase Three. At the start of Phase Three, because that'll give us the Planning Department the ability to withhold permits at that point in time.
Mr. Mayor.
My food for thought.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I think I was tracking with what Councilman Borton was saying, perhaps tying it to the earlier of Phase Three and some outside date. And I can appreciate there's an enforcement question, but at the same time, I mean, you're a long-term developer in our community, and I think, you know, you've got, you guys have met your promises before, it sounds like you've done a great job in the past, based on Councilman Hoagland's comments. So, you know, I'm sure that you'll know that to continue to do business in Meridian, you need to meet your obligations with the city, and I can hang my hat on that.
And Mr. Mayor, I think Councilwoman Schrader has a good point, Councilman Cavanagh has a good point. When we submit the final plat and construction plans and landscape plan for Phase Three, we'll know if that's been updated. So then, I guess we can, when we bring, we got to come back before you with that final plat. So if I come before you with that final plat, and they have still not updated or upgraded that facility, I mean, then we can have a discussion, is it appropriate that we wait, or just put it in and say, let's just put her in? Because you guys have another shot at us on that Phase Three. So. Caleb, I don't know if you've got some verbiage?
Not a mayor, or Mr. Mayor, sorry. Just kind of playing off of Becky's scenario there, if that's agreeable to the council. I mean, I would, you could almost word it then, that it would be included with Phase Three, and then give the option for the council to not require it with Phase Three approval, if it's not been, you know, improved by the Williams Pipeline at that time. So it's, so that would include it, but the council has the right to not require it if it's not quite done, if that makes sense?
That makes sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
We're making sausage in this. It sounded, I thought that, whatever this condition would be, would be part of, isn't there a DA mod?
DA mod, yes, sir.
Right, so these conditions would be put in today's DA modification?
Yes.
So you would, at a future date, so if we said, for example, you're going to do it in Phase Three, period, and that's the DA, and it were to go forward, you would then, perhaps in 20, some other future date, choose, make a new obligation to modify it again, and try and remove that obligation for whatever reason? Is that, Mr. Mayor, kind of what would happen? I don't know how the plat itself would do it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilman Borton, yeah, this is, this is all around the condition that was the outstanding one left from the planning and zoning. So it is what the condition in regards to when the multi-use pathway has to be built. It would be a DA provision, but as Caleb has stated, again, without having some method in which to track it, and then also do something with that, then it's very difficult. An imaginary date doesn't really help. So, based on phasing, based on building permitting for occupancy, those are all triggers that we need, that would go in the development agreement, a plat, a plat note is nice, but really, from the enforcement tool, we really need the DA to reflect that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
What would be the language in a DA that is the enforcement tool?
The language would be, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, so the language would be, prior to occupancy, when building permits reach 30, when, before, before the beginning of Phase Four, anything like that, that's a trigger. I don't know if Caleb has one that he prefers, but anything like that, that's a trigger for them to know, we've issued building permit, 37, 38 requires this. We've issue, we're going to issue occupancy, this requires this, something like that. And again, I'm sure Becky has suggestions, but that type of trigger in the development agreement? Because again, 130 of these homes can be built without anything today, they're already approved. So we're talking about 65 homes-ish, or 66.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
That's the, the trigger that you're recommending is no CO in Phase Three until it's built?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, if this is a public hearing, is there anybody who'd like to offer testimony on this project?
Mr. Mayor, Suzy Huddaball is here.
You can come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Suzy Huddaball, my address is 573 West Oak Springs Drive, Meridian. Thank you for allowing me to speak again, I did talk last week a little bit about the school. I did go down to West Ada and talk to some people there, it's been obviously a crazy week for them down there with everything, so it was a little bit hard to get hold of some people. But I did get a couple of letters that I do think that you already have, but Stapleton is 220, and then with this, with a bit more phase, and then this new phase, we're talking 382 total. When I talked to Kim that actually does these letters, she said that usually when you ask for something, it's only based on that certain subdivision. So I did just want to make sure that we know, that's a lot of homes in the same area that are going up right now. She did explain to me that they feel like they've asked for reprieve before, and that they feel a little beat down, I guess. So I just wanted to say, we love living in Meridian, we love having this community, there's a lot more to it than just growth of houses, I believe, and we do need to make sure that our children continue to have that excellent education that we have, schools that they are in, and that we don't wait till we're 700 over capacity, like Rocky Mountain has been dealing with for a long time now. So I didn't get to talk to Eric Exline, but she did mention to me that he had wrote a thing for KAT, or Six on Your Side, last year. And so she sent that to me, and it does just explain some of it from his point of view, that I guess it still stands. He said, "It becomes a problem when you, your stage becomes a classroom," or at an elementary school where the auxiliary gym, they put a temporary divider between it, and that was a fourth grade on one side and a fifth on the other. And the growth is not stopping. Eric said, "More than 14,000 home sites have now been approved across the entirety of West Ada, that's a big number. That's 11,000-ish future kids that will show up when those houses are built and sold. This is adding pressure to a district that's already feeling strained from overcrowding in its major high schools." And then it just goes on to talk about, and it said Rocky is about 600 kids over, Mountain View 500 over. So things are coming into place with Hawaii, and, but I would just like to point out that I just want our kids to be important and remembered as we put these houses up, and just hope that West Ada can actually keep up with that, rather than try to catch up later. And our kids are the ones that are paying the price for that. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Just a comment.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you for saying that, and that really speaks to what's in my heart right now about West Ada, and, you know, I know we all are keeping that in mind, and clearly, the bond that they're trying to issue is going to be really critical. I think we all know that. And there's no doubt that if the bond fails, that they have no way to build more schools, that that would be a factor that would weigh heavily, at least for me, on approving future developments. So thanks for saying that.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to testify? Not yet, I'll come forward.
I'll be brief, Mr. Mayor, council. I work closely with the West Ada School District, I have for the past 28 years that I've been coming before the city of Meridian. We've incorporated more school, elementary sites, high school sites, and middle school sites in our projects than any firm in the valley, because I've, my kids went to Meridian School District, and I know the importance of, we don't have good communities, good neighborhoods, without schools. Mr. Yocum has indicated to me that, based on their projections, that the charter schools, the private schools, are taking a lot of the new growth. And so they did not meet their projections like last, last year, that they had anticipated. And so he said that that did give them some relief, because they had, their projections were far more than the number of kids that showed up. But obviously, they're being proactive with the school sites and the bonds. I'm working with Mr. Yocum on a new elementary site in North Eagle, that is essential, that we're trying to, we're planning as part of a large project off of Beacon Light and Floating Feather Road. And so I'm doing everything we, I can, and like I said, people don't want to buy houses if there's no place for their kids to go to. if there's no place for their kids to go to school, and that's just a reality. So we need to do what we can, and I want to assure you that we work with the district as much as possible. And I always encourage my clients, if they have that ability and the property that has size, to donate school sites, discount sites, do whatever they can. I think I'm at one high school, one middle school, and about five elementaries now in my career, maybe six, I forgot, lost count. But I'm proud of that. That's, that's part, that's, it makes me feel good about what I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. To frame one component of the discussion, the last remark that I heard from the applicant was the proposed solution as to the pathway, that the pathway will be installed prior to any certificate of occupancy for Phase Three, period, as being the trigger. So as to that point, question to council if anyone has any specific concern on that being one of the, should there be conditions of approval, that that being one of them? I think it's 5.1M. Thanks.
Councilman Strater.
Sorry about that. Maybe just to kick us off a little bit, because it was partially my fault that we were delayed the last time. I appreciated the additional information from West Ada. I remain unsatisfied in terms of the amount of information I'm looking for, but I do understand these are extraordinary times, and they have a lot on their plate. I totally think that the schools is an important thing for us to keep in mind going forward. It seems like we're getting very close to maximum capacity in this area. It appears that the elementary school can take on some additional students with its expansion. The houses are not all being built at once. They're gonna be, the students will be divided among the three schools. It'll be phased in, hopefully the bond will pass. I think, you know, the clarification on the middle school is very helpful for me. What I do appreciate about this project is that it is within our priority growth area in terms of having services there already. The fire response time seems adequate. And really, the applicant has worked with the city to put in a lot of infrastructure in the past, and I do think that the neighborhood park is important, and I do consider that in addition to the open space, to be a big amenity that we shouldn't totally discount. So I'm supportive of approval with some of the conditions that people alluded to about the pathway. But that's just speaking for my two cents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
Councilman Hogue.
Councilman Strater just mentioned something about parks, and it brought up some of those mentioned earlier. And Councilman Borton, do we need to include anything about memorialized, a park agreement should be signed or anything like that in this, or is that something that just takes its place? I mean, it will happen as Parks works with them and they get that done. I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
Because, this is, this is just my opinion, because of the uncertainty of the future of open space in this application, because of Williams Pipeline and what we've discussed, I, I personally, and I personally would want that open space that, that has to do with this project done well before, you know, this, this subdivision is complete. You're talking about a possibility of having very little open space with exception of, you know, the little park area in the middle. We don't know, although we're talking about it with, the applicant is talking to the Parks Department in regard to what that entire park looks like, I don't think it's an unreasonable ask if the applicant is going to possibly develop or green it up with sprinkler and pass it over to the Parks Department to just throw down some sod and, and sprinkle it and, and consider it to be open space for the subdivision. Personally, if I were a homeowner in that subdivision, knowing the uncertainty of that pathway and having a big dirt lot that's just sitting there that potentially could be, you know, a future park or at least future open space in conjunction with this, this subdivision, you know, that'd bug me. And so I actually, I'm, I'm in favor of greening that area up as well within the time frame of this, this project.
Mr. Mayor.
Let's go to Councilman Cavanagh.
To Councilmember Hoagland's question about a Parks Agreement, I don't think that's necessary at this time, in part because I think that we need to have a much larger conversation about if we want to take on this as, as a city park. These types of parks, to me, are somewhat a challenge, I think, for us as a community because they are served by the folks that live around them. So they essentially become taxpayer subsidized private parks. And, you know, I think a number of years ago, we moved to kind of shifting a model to these larger, more regional parks where everybody from our community can come to, as opposed to these kind of pocket hidden parks that unless you live in the neighborhood, you don't really know about. So, you know, this part of Meridian is really, really special to me for a lot of reasons, and I think we've seen a lot of really smart thinking with the projects that are going in and around that. And allowing them to design what meets the needs for their residents, I think, is better than us having that, another city park that the vast majority of our citizens don't ever get to really participate or visit. So I think that's, that's why I said this is maybe a conversation for us for another day. I think Councilmember Burton's comments about, you know, getting something green, I think they're, the developers willing to be doing that sooner rather than later, at least getting it grassed and sprinkled. But turning it over to the city to maintain, that's not something that I'm necessarily in support of.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogue.
Just to comment on, on that, I remember when we approved Rita Husky Park over there off of 10 Mile, and I thought the same thing, but I found, since I live over in that area, when you have a pathway along a park, it really changes the dynamic. It really truly is more useful to people, and we're putting in the trailhead on 10 Mile, and I don't know if there'd be a trailhead here, but that was, that was interesting to see that dynamic with, with the pathway that, that comes in. So this kind of gives me some comfort level with, with the pathway, just, just to let you know. But I, I wanted to follow up, and I don't think we've closed the public hearing, so I don't know if Becky would respond to this. But I thought in the last meeting, we did talk about having them green that up, but I could be mistaken. Becky, if you wouldn't mind, did, did we have agreement on greening up that 1.8 acres? Not trees or anything, but having grass and having it mowed? I, I could be mistaken, I could be thinking of another application, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, I think what we talked about is that we would green the whole 10.89 acres up as, in its entirety. Mr. Centers didn't want to do it in a piecemeal fashion because we need to obviously get our Parks Agreement in place. Secondly, we've got to work with the Parks Department as far as the design for the concept. I did the Rita Husky Park as part of our Isola Creek or Bolano Creek project. It's, like you said, it's along that multi-use pathway corridor along the Five Mile Creek. So this one, I think, has a lot more to offer than the ones that are tucked within the development. But what we don't want to do is just do it piecemeal, because we're gonna have to obviously do a grading and drainage plan and where they're gonna want restrooms and parking lots and services and everything. So I think the question arose is, is this 1.69 acres part of your required 10%? And my answer to that is no, it's above and beyond that. We have 14% qualified open space, because we have all detached walks in here, eight-foot parkways, which we did not have in the previous preliminary plat. I only had six-foot parkways. We have, we have a pool facility, we have a playground facility. So we are building our own private amenities within the project, and we would like to wait to do that 1.69 acres as a whole, so we can do all 10.89 under that agreement. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Becky, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Burton, did you want to come forward and have any comments to add?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the park. We're, as a staff, is in favor of having a neighborhood park here. There's a lot of good attributes to this site. The size is, is four-plus acres over what our minimum neighborhood park is. One of the things about that is that, you know, yes, it serves the residents that are in close proximity to it, but at the same time, because this is located on that Williams Pipeline pathway, that, that's, that then becomes very walkable, and it connects other communities outside of that particular neighborhood. The other thing that, that we like is because this isn't part of the minimum open space that's required, it will become open space. I mean, that's a guarantee. We're not in favor of greening it up piecemeal. It's, there's, there's grading issues, and also with that 1.69 acres, the Williams Pipeline runs through that as well. So that shrinks that even more, so there's gonna be a dirt corridor there, and it gets really weird, and how do you, how do you integrate just that little bit of grass into a larger, more cohesive park design? It would be our preferred option to receive all of the property in one piece, negotiate a reimbursement agreement or a greenup or whatever that looks like with the developer. And, you know, we've done three of these in the last few years, and they've worked out really well. We have an idea of what an equitable contribution would be that is both good for the neighbors and good for the community. Our last three neighborhood parks that we received, there's an average of about $750,000 in contributions between both land and construction costs. So I think we start there. I mean, some of the land values have gone up, but I think we've, we've got a good framework for a, for an agreement, and it's, it would be our preference to structure it that way.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Hoagland.
Question for Mike, then. So when you memorialize these, these issues, that's just something the department will do when, when, is it when you're ready to do them, or do you do them early on, knowing that in the future this will, will take place?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, we would, we would work on that and bring it back to council for approval as a memorandum of agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
And council, like I said, I've had conversations with Director Sidaway on this and informed him to go forward, to have these conversations. No one needs to come back to council, you know, to explore this option. It is still part of what we are looking at. Another component we talked about, it's on the Mid Mile Collector. That also opens it up. That's a pretty straight road compared to most, some of the other locations, just from that standpoint. But ultimately, it'll be your decision whether or not you wish to have this as a park in the city or not.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
May I ask the applicant another question?
Public hearing is still open, yes.
Becky, would you come forward? Getting your 10,000 steps in tonight.
Yes, I am.
So you're regularly on, on construction sites, as am I. We've had some conversations recently about concerns in general with safety with these open lots. We had another application come before us recently with something similar. And I'm wondering if there's any way that we could, could ask that that be somehow, I don't know, I hate to say fenced off, but it's, I'm sure there'll be signs that'll go up that say, "No construction dumping, no parking," but is there anything that, that the applicant can do to protect that space so that we don't have safety concerns? It's, it's, you know, it's gonna be right there on that collector, and I just, you know, you understand what I'm getting at?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Peralta, I understand fully what, what you're saying. The beauty of this particular project is Mr. Centers lives on the property, and he watches it like a hawk, believe me. And this property is actively farmed. So it's not like it's going to be a weed patch, a dumping ground, or everybody's gonna go out there and, and wash out their concrete. That does not happen, I guarantee you, at Mr. Centers' property. I've been out there, it's the cleanest site I've ever seen.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you for clarifying that. I'm so used to these random dirt lots sitting out there and the challenges that come with them, so I appreciate that.
And they become weed packed, yes, yeah, this is actively farmed.
Thank you, thank you.
Counsel, any further questions or comments, or do we have a motion regarding the public hearing? Councilman Borton.
I move to close the public hearing on item 6B, H-2019.
Second?
Have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
For a brief comment, I'm, I had concerns, and I think I framed him in that, in the last hearing about liking the earlier project better, but in all fairness, it doesn't necessarily mean that this project is fatally flawed in any sense. Kind of went back on my own and read through the comp plan and tried to capture some of the residential language, which talks about diversity in housing options, not only in the style of housing, but in the economic range that they're provided within the community. So I think there are some policies within our comp plan that try to capture and promote some of the diversity and affordability that it sounds like this project's trying to capture, which I, which I appreciate, and in light of our new comp plan and how it tries to frame those policies that we are to support, that I'm comfortable enough as presented and with the, the specific change to condition 5.1M concerning the pathway, that it's appropriate in my eyes to go forward. I agree with Councilman Hoagland, I think, you know, I think the example, or the analogy to Rita Husky Park is a great one with what this pathway and then an adjacent, adjacent park can be long-term for this area, which is, I think will be wildly popular for, for the entire region. So I'm supportive of it as presented with those changes.
Councilman Cap.
I echo a lot of Councilmember Borton's comments. I think Councilmember Strater did a really eloquent job early on in her comments, talking about the importance of the school district. And appreciate your patience to let us get better data. I didn't recall in the first letter from the school district about the expansion that was happening at, is it Merrimack? So seeing that they're building a modular to accommodate more students, to accommodate the growth, gave me more comfort. Appreciate the conversation back and forth about the pathways. My, my motivation is, I mentioned that earlier, this part of town is just really special, and not going back and forth because we're trying to jam you up, it's because we want to keep it special, and I know that that's your goal as well. So with the discussion here tonight about the pathways, I'm incredibly supportive of this. I think it checks so many boxes, it's gonna be a great addition to our community. Not quite there that it provides affordability, maybe it's a less expensive, but still a higher quality housing option for folks in South Meridian, something that we definitely need in that part of town.
Counsel, any further questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, quick comment over here from the fire department.
Are we allowed to take public bill? Okay.
Just a quick comment for Councilmember Cavanagh. I have seen the plans for the addition at the school. They're actually adding a building with four classrooms in it.
Wow, that's even better. That's great. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Nobody else has any comments? I'm ready to move things forward. All right. So, Mr. Mayor, I move we approve item 6B, Gray Cliff Estates, H-2019. Let me grab my agenda, make sure I do this right. Thank you. sure I do this right. Thank you. Sorry, I jumped ahead of things. Thank you, Mr. Hoagland. Dash 0129, modifying the DA to, I guess, approve that as presented, inclusive of condition 5.1. M, which speaks to the creation of the pathway on issuance of the Phase III Certificate of Occupancy. I can't hear you, sorry.
Prior to.
Prior to, did I say after? Prior to. Thank you. Prior to.
Second.
Sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Have motion second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
My, my vote's going to be no tonight, and I wanted to just discuss it really quickly. I owe it to the applicant and to Ms. McKay, and the citizens that live in that area, to be honest with you. I, I, I just think that there's, there's too much uncertainty in regard to the open space. I realize it's going to happen by, may or may not happen by the beginning of Phase III, but in the meantime, there's just going to be one little sliver of open space that's going to be usable. And I, I would, I would just like more, more certainty in regard to the, the pathway and that extra portion of acreage to the north. I know that the Parks and Rec Superintendent, Mr. Barton, has mentioned that he, they would rather have it all done in one phase, but as, as a homeowner living in that subdivision, I, I would prefer to have more open space. And so, I just wanted to clarify that for the, for the record before, before the vote takes place.
Thank you. Any council, any further comments on the motion? If not, court will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton?
Aye.
Cavanagh?
Aye.
Pearl?
Aye.
Strater?
Aye.
Hoagland?
Aye.
Burnt?
No.
The ayes have it. Motion is agreed to. Thank you very much. Item number seven is future meeting topics. Are there any future meeting topics the council would like to have considered for a future agenda? Okay. Item eight?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
I move, wait a minute here, one second. We had an executive session earlier. We didn't quite finish, and so I move that we go back into executive session, Pareto Code 74-206C and F.
Second.
Have motion second going. Is there any session, any discussion on the motion? If not, court will call the roll.
Mr. Mayor, Borton?
Aye.
Cavanagh?
Aye.
Pearl?
Aye.
Strater?
Aye.
Hoagland?
Aye.
Burnt?
Aye.
All ayes.
We on?
Right, I'm getting resolution now.
Oh. Just now.
Wasn't such a handsome.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I could read all of that, and you can simply concur that that's, the council agrees.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Move to come out of executive session.
Second.
Have motion second come out of executive session. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Disposed, nay. The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, we have two items we'd like to add to the agenda. One is a resolution, and the second is an ordinance. You can add items to the agenda after the meeting has started and take action on them. And I'll, I'll, for the record, Idaho Code 742044C says an agenda may be amended after the start of the meeting upon a motion that states the reason for the amendment, and states the good faith reason. The agenda item is not included in the original agenda posting. Final action may not be taken on an agenda item added after the start of the meeting unless an emergency is declared necessitating action at that meeting. The declaration and justification shall be reflected in the minutes. So, we have had an emergency declaration across the county and across two counties yesterday by Mayor Simison and the other mayors around the state. State law requires, after an emergency declaration is made, that the council must review and approve that by resolution within seven days of the declaration. That would then make that emergency declaration good for 30 days, and may be extended if needed in the future. Second, the second item is, we were proposing an ordinance that provides powers for the mayor to enfor, to enact, if necessary during this emergency, to create some safety for our community in regards to separation, business closures, limitations of large-scale events, and, and the like. So, the, the ordinance is required by Idaho Code to give the mayor the authority to, to do those types of actions if needed. So, those two items, in, in my opinion, as, as your council, because this is an emergency, fits the requirements of the ordinance, and maybe move forward tonight if you would concur.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Mr. Burnt?
Thank you, Mr. Neri, for that clarification and that guidance. With that said, I'd like to amend the agenda to add ordinance 20- With that said, I'd like to amend the agenda to add ordinance 20-1877 and resolution number 20-2195.
Second.
I have a motion of second to amend the agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, ask the clerk to do a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Just one request, a request if the council would approve the resolution first and then move forward on the ordinance.
Okay. So item eight.
Eight A.
Eight A.
Eight A.
Resolution number 20-2195, ask the clerk to read by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to find the title. I apologize. This resolution is a resolution ratifying a declaration of local disaster emergency, authorizing the continuance of local disaster emergency declaration and its terms for a period of 30 days, authorizing the immediate expenditure of public money to safeguard life, health, and property, and providing an effective date.
You've heard this resolution read, would anybody like it read in the entirety? If not, do I have a discussion or a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I move we approve resolution 20-2195 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve resolution 20-2195 under suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the motion? If not, clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes. Resolution's approved. So item 8B is ordinance number 20-1877. Ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance adding a new chapter to Title IV Meridian City Code regarding public health hazard authority. Definitions: Public Health Hazard Orders, Process for Enacting Public Health Hazard Orders, Penalty: Adopting a Savings Clause, and Providing an Effective Date.
Is there anybody who'd like this ordinance read in its entirety? Seeing none, do I have any discussion or motion on the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Maybe both. I'm happy to make a motion that we approve ordinance -20-1877 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve ordinance 20-1877 under suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Real quick, I'm sure like all out of America, I have wavered around these issues that we're faced, from somewhat of being dismissive about it to really being really scared. And I think that both this resolution and this ordinance is a good step in our community's efforts to protect our citizens. I think it's important, Mr. Mayor, oftentimes city leaders try to get it perfect in a box, and we don't have time to get things perfect in a box. And so I urge you to be quick and know, I try really hard to never speak for this body, but to know that we, as a body, really have your back on this and want to support you in this. It's important, not just for our employees, but for our community at large, and I'm happy to be supportive of this. Any of you?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
I also wanted to thank Deputy Attorney Emily Kane for putting this together. She, you know, this ordinance and this resolution has been adopted by other municipalities throughout the valley, including Boise. So grateful for Deputy Attorney Emily Kane for putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you, second that.
Mr. Mayor, I had to add one more thing to that comment. Actually Deputy Attorney Ted Baird wrote the reso. We also provided that reso statewide to other municipalities as well as the ordinance. So we're going to see this same one all over the place, both of them written by our folks.
That's leadership right there.
Agreed. Do I have any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I just want to echo Councilman Cavanagh's comments and just state that, you know, I hope you feel that we do have your back, and I know the whole community is counting on us, and I just urge us to be as proactive as possible. And I think that, you know, doing a great job might result in looking occasionally like an overreaction, and I hope and pray that that's the case. But I think the danger of not acting is too great. Thank you.
All right, with that, let's clerk call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Do I have any last motion for the evening?
Anything you want to say before we close the meeting?
Just that I appreciate the confidence you all have displayed with that effort, and I'll be in constant communication with you all if any of these actions need to be put in place.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
With that said, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Disposed nay, the ayes have it. God, that was great.